Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person or watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on our agenda is announcements, and it has to do with all of our upcoming meetings. And then we also have proclamations this evening and recognitions. Council meetings, regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 3rd at 5:30 PM and Tuesday, October 17th at 5:30 PM. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, October 10th at 5:30 PM. All meetings of the City Council are held in the chambers, in the council chambers unless it is announced that it will be in a different room. So tonight, I will do the recognitions of our outgoing commissioners and then proclamations. So let's see. Who is here to take photos? Oh, I see. Okay. I think because we have three outgoing, I'll recognize them, and then we'll have one picture with everybody here, because we also need to take photos with our fire and photos with our police. And then we also need to take a photo for Manufacturers Week. So, okay. So first, Al Anderson. How are you?
Pretty good.
Good. You did something to your foot.
Yeah.[204.81][204.81](Laughter). I had it fixed.
Good. Well, Al Anderson, for your dedicated service to the community, through the Economic Development Commission, July 2019 to September 2023. But we're also very grateful that you're going off of this commission and going onto a different commission. And so we thank you for your service. So I'm going to hand you this, and I'm going to have you step here, and then we'll recognize the others, and then we'll all take the same picture at the same time. And the other one is John Wallace. So John, I think I've handed you this many times, simply because we appointed you to a commission, then our nation called you back to service, and you went back and served in Iraq. And thank you for your service to our nation and to our community. And then you came back, and you continued to give of yourself. And so we appointed you again to serve on a commission. And so for your dedicated service to the community through the Planning Commission, August 2021 to September 2023. And I thank you so much, John, for everything. So I know you're moving over to Savage, but you can still volunteer in Burnsville.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Hamilton. Thank you so much for your dedicated service to the communities through the Parks and Natural Resource Commission, July 2022 to September 2023. And we thank you for your service in this commission, but we also are very grateful that you're saying yes to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you three would come with me and along with Beth, okay. And then we're going to take a photo. Take a photo. That's how we do things at Burnsville. We have to make sure that people. John? Good. Get home and finish the Twins game after this.
Where were you on the trumpet?
Yeah.
Doesn't have a verse. Not very well.
So. Are we balanced over here then?
Yeah, maybe shift to the, this way, so you're kind of way over there.
Okay, so you want to shift down this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go, right in front of Kara.
Now you're in the right spot, John.
Yes.
Much better.
You got to move. Thank you. So the first proclamation is for Manufacturers Month, October 2023. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry, crucial to the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy. And whereas workers took home $24.9 billion in wages from Minnesota's manufacturing jobs in 2022. And. And whereas workers took home $370.5 million in wages from Burnsville's manufacturing jobs in 2022. Whereas manufacturing jobs in Burnsville account for approximately 25.8% of Dakota County's total manufacturing employment. And whereas manufacturing provides more than 323,000 highly skilled, well-paying jobs, which significantly contribute to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic vitality. And whereas manufacturing has provided Burnsville with 4,997 jobs in 2022, which makes it Burnsville's third-largest employing industry sector. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2023 to be Manufacturing Month, proclaimed this third day of October 2023. And accepting for Manufacturers Month is our Economic Development Specialist, Beth Weber. And Beth, we're going to take that picture over here with everybody. Okay, thank you. The next proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Burnsville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Burnsville. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at their greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires caused 2,800 civilian deaths in the United States in 2021. According to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments respond to more than 166,400 annually between 2016 and 2020. Whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas Burnsville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Burnsville's Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Burnsville's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme Cooking Safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. Effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through the 14th as to be Fire Prevention Week. And accepting the proclamation is Chief Doug. And then we need all of the, those who are left and have not run out, we're going to do that with everybody. Come on, guys.
They ran out for a very good reason.
I know, it's so. We have to make sure that people will stay. And our last proclamation is for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month was established to increase awareness about the disease and the importance of screening and early detection. And whereas one in eight U.S. women and one in 833 U.S. men will be diagnosed with breast cancer at some point during their lifetime. And the American Cancer Society estimates that more than 300,490 cases, 297, 790 women and 2,800 men of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed this year. And 55,720 new cases of noninvasive breast cancer will be diagnosed this year. Whereas mammography can detect breast cancer up to two years before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. The City of Burnsville is committed to raising awareness about breast cancer and the impact it has on our loved ones, friends, colleagues, and community members, and proclaiming our commitment to prevention, detection, and treatment of breast cancer. And whereas the Police Department and other Dakota County agencies are wearing and selling special pink patches during October to raise awareness for breast cancer and all cancers. And residents can purchase the Burnsville Pink Patch online via Venmo at BurnsvillePDPinkPatch or in the police lobby during business hours to help raise funds for cancer research. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council, and in honor of all that have fought against breast cancer, do hereby proclaim October 2023 be National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Burnsville, and encourage all women to become aware that they are at risk and to check with their doctors to see whether they should get a mammogram, proclaim this third day of October 2023. And we are so blessed that we have in our audience, come on, you guys, all of you. And I think who's receiving? Thank you. Okay. Are you okay?
Yep, I'm good.
He's got to scoot over.
We need him right.
Just get right directly in front of Kara. That way, tradition will be met.
You're good?
I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah.
A little more to the right, you'll be fine.
Councilmember Workman. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, were you up there or not?
He's back here.
Blocked by your own.
And also for our viewing audience and everybody, we all are wearing and supporting our Police Department and also breast cancer with the, we're all wearing our shirts with our patches. And so we'll continue to do that through the month of October to support our Police Department and raise awareness for breast cancer. Wonderful. The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone that would like to address the council on an item that is not in the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. And I understand that we have one person who would like to address the council. Please come forward and, Mrs. Phillips. And just give us your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Kathleen Phillips. My address is 15270 Greenhaven Lane. I'm here as a board member of the Winterwood Garden Homeowners Association. Winterwood Garden Homes is an association of 60 garden homes. We are one of 78 homeowner associations within the city of Burnsville limit. Most of these associations represent anywhere from 20 to over 100 homeowners. Decisions made here at City Council impact these citizens, and most are, or many are seniors on a fixed income. I'm here to discuss two topics. The first is the decision to no longer provide water shut-off to homes within an association. And secondly, to address how permits are issued for association projects. First, water shut-off. In the past, association homeowners paid a fee to the city to come out and locate and turn off water at our homes at the curb stop. Now, the city will not turn off the water at our homes. The rationale I have been given is that the curb stops are association-owned. The city does not wish to be liable for damage to the curb stops or the property when performing water shut-off. This change in policy was not communicated to homeowners, association property managers, or local plumbers, and is not detailed on the City of Burnsville website or in any publication that any of us have received from the City of Burnsville. Local plumbers have informed me they do not have a means of locating the curb stop, and they don't have the necessary tools to turn the water off at the curb stop. This leaves our association between a rock and a hard spot. To date, the association has purchased a metal detector to locate the curb stop at a cost of $50. I worked with Tony White in the Water Department, and he connected me with a representative from Corin, Maine, who sells the tools that are needed to shut the water off. The tool cost is $188. However, there's no guarantee, from the information I have from the plumbers, that if we purchase one tool, it would shut off the water at all our individual addresses, that they might have different forms of curb stop. Meanwhile, while I've been going back and forth with the city and the plumbers and multiple phone calls, we cannot find anyone who can come out and help us. So a month has passed, and one of our homeowners has a leak that occurred before the meter in his home. He needs to have the interior water shut off, and his water shut off inside the house is not functioning. So earlier this summer, we try to be a responsible association in terms of conserving water and taking care of leaks. Earlier this summer, there was a large leak that was located prior to the start of our irrigation system, and that came before our water meter. So we were not paying for the water that was being lost. We approached the city to maybe pay 50% of the cost of the repair. City Water Department refused, and we ended up paying over $5,000 to repair the leak. And like I say, it was before the meter, so we were not paying for that water. But we try to be good stewards of water. What I'm requesting in regards to the water shut-off policy is a reasonable compromise. If the city wants to absolve themselves for being responsible for damage to the curb stop or the homeowner's property, there could always be a waiver of responsibility signed by the association. If this is not possible, at a minimum, provide the association and our property managers information on this new shut-off policy. Also provide it to local plumbers, because they're totally unaware of this, and they really don't know how to help us. We'd also like to have the homeowners notified in writing and provide guidance on the Burnsville website for association owners, and provide a list of plumbers or other professionals that can locate these curb stops and have the correct tools to turn off our water. I think these are reasonable requests. We have lost a service. We have not had any adjustment in our utility bill. We're paying the same utility rate as single-family homes, who, I guess the city owns their curb stop. And we just think that City Council should be aware of these challenges that we're facing. The second issue that I'd like to bring up is regarding replacement of external components that are owned by the association. The city currently charges permit by individual address. So in our association, we have 60 individual addresses. So every time we try to make an improvement that requires a permit, we pay 60 times the permit fee. And I'll give you an example. A few years ago, we replaced all the light, external light fixtures, which were owned by the association. We paid $25 back then, now it's quite a bit more, times 60, which is $1,500. The cost of those light fixtures was $1,200. So we're paying more in permit fees than we're paying for an item that we're trying to replace to keep the property looking nice. In a few years, we have a big project coming to replace siding and soffits. And I've already calculated at the current cost for a permit, that would cost us $6,120 just to replace our siding. This is a large financial burden, and sometimes, as I said, it costs more than the project itself. I ask that City Council consider establishing a permit structure for association projects rather than charging us by individual address. We all want our community to look better. We want it to be in good repair. Excessive permit fees discourage associations from taking on these improvement projects. I thank you for listening to my concerns, and I'll be happy to answer questions if you have them at any time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Just stay there. I see that Councilmember Workman wants to speak.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. This reminds me of our street improvement, how we handled those. And a few years ago, when somebody came in and recommended some changes, and this council thought it was a good idea, we can't address things that we don't know about, and this is news to me as far as how we handle these things. And so I'm not going to sit up here and say we're going to snap our finger and change something, but I think this warrants at least a discussion with our staff to see if some of these things make sense, because what you're saying, at least to me, seems logical.
Mrs. Phillips, it's wonderful that you came forward and raised these issues. As you said, we have quite a few HOAs here in the city. And some of us who sit on this days live in HOAs. So one of the things that I'm going to ask you to do with our, our Community Development Director, Jeff Thompson, is to talk about this, and then what our staff will do is to look into it and bring it back. Because I'm wondering, if you're the only one bringing this to our attention, I'm wondering what all the other HOAs are going through. And your HOA, do you have individual doors to your units?
Correct, individual entrance.
So I know that Councilmember Keely lives in an HOA with individual doors, okay? I live in a condominium, so I have a different. But we have many HOAs. We also, right on Traveler's Trail, we have some of the longstanding HOAs in the city. So I'd like to know if this is the same experience they have, or are they dealing with it, and how are they dealing with it? So I think our staff has some work to do in contacting all of those HOAs and to see what's going on. If you're the only one that's experiencing this, then we need to also take a look at that, what's going on. But I think we have some work to do. Our staff has some work to do. And I would ask that, I think Mr. Thompson may have his contact information, and he can share that with you. And then they can look into it and then bring it back to us at a work session.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Henderson, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Okay. We will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a, oops, before the consent agenda, I need to look at additions to the final agenda. Acting City Manager Schwartz, do we have any emergency items to come before us?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council? Okay. We will then move on. The next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine, and it, and it will be enacted with one motion. However, an item can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Acting City Manager Schwartz, is there any item from staff? Does staff wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Anyone in the audience wishes an item to be pulled? Anyone on Zoom? Mrs. Henderson?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And members of the council? May I then have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Second?
There's a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. The first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing, and this is to, is a resolution to adopt the 2023 Neighborhood Service Assessment. Community Development Director, Mr. Jeff Thompson, is presenting. Mr. Thompson?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and council. Generally, twice a year, we bring to the council review our outstanding Neighborhood Services fines and fees for the council's consideration of specially assessing those to the properties. So this process and our procedures for this are outlined in our policy, so we are following that policy as we review these charges and implement them, noting that we are allowed, as part of the policy and our ordinance, to specially assess them for being unpaid. Maybe before we get to the fines and fees portion, know that before we get to this point where we're assessing unpaid fees, we have long worked with owners on potential violations on properties. We follow our process in Neighborhood Services of first, starting with, kind of, when we get a complaint, starting with education and outreach to property owners to make them aware if we have observed a violation of what our code says, and working with them collaboratively to try to solve that issue. 99% of the time, that solves the issue, and that resolves it, and in most of our cases, follow that path. Even after that, if there's continued noncompliance or lack of response, we'll certainly still send enforcement letters, just letting them know that this does need to be corrected with specific deadlines. It's only after we've gone through that kind of education and first steps of enforcement to the point where we get to particularly abatement, right, where we are going and doing the work ourselves with the costs incurred by the city, or issuing any sort of administrative citation, or reinspection fees for kind of the regular work of our staff being out there to, to try to bring the property into compliance with our ordinances. So we have a list of seven properties for the first half of the year that have unpaid fines or fees or abatement costs for the city. We have communicated this kind of final compliance notice to them. We sent them a final notice of the unpaid fees on September 15th. We also. We also invited them to a public open house or just a public meeting to come and address those issues or come up with resolutions or solutions to resolving those issues on an ongoing basis. We didn't have anybody attend that meeting or reach out from the notices that we sent to them. And certainly, under required under our ordinance in the statute, is the council hold a public hearing before we assess these to the property? And this is another opportunity for owners to object or ask questions or try to resolve the issue before we finalize that assessment role. So as I mentioned, there are seven properties that have unpaid fees for the first half of 2023. The total amount is just under $8,500. I would note, a substantial amount of that is actually one property, and that's for a lengthy and kind of ongoing abatement that we've been undergoing on that property. That's about just over $6,200 is just for the one abatement of a property. So generally, they range from about $175 up to about $800 for the other properties on the roll. And as we know, that does not... This isn't for all the kind of unresolved cases ongoing. It's just for the ones that have been finalized for past due payment by the end of June. So with that, we recommend that the council hold a public hearing. Again, that's an opportunity for anybody to ask questions or inquire into those. And if there's no public comment, we would recommend the council adopt the resolution establishing the assessment role for the first half of 2023. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
On the... Thank you. On the specific property, so it's not a rolling total necessarily, it's just what's been official for 2022 for properties that have had a long history of this?
Correct. Mayor and council, the one property in particular where it was abatement that was done actually at kind of the end of 2022 and rolled into the first part of 2023, it's for those abatement costs. On that particular property, if there's additional actions that the city needs to take for additional abatement, those would come forward as a future consideration for the council.
So year-to-date, that's the sum of what has been charged to that property for the work that's been done so far?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Schultz?
In discussions with that property, is there a reason why they're unable to do the abatement?
Mayor and council, it's been, yeah, long-going conversations with that property owner throughout the court system, for sure, on trying to resolve that. There's frankly just been lack of compliance with it and a lack of follow-through on completing that abatement. There's been some progress at times, and certainly this year, we've seen some progress. I think it's now kind of getting a little worse and getting to the point where we need to go down the abatement process potentially again, but we have to again work through the same kind of legal process with our attorney's office to make sure that we're following that process and before we go through another abatement. And we would certainly give that owner additional opportunities to comply, but we'd want to make sure that we continue forth, because we are getting complaints about the conditions on the exterior of that property.
Sure, and that I understand. I guess what I'm asking is, is this a won't take care of the situation or unable to take care of the situation?
Yeah. Mayor and council, I don't have a great answer on if it's won't or unable. I think it's probably a combination of both. There's certainly clear communication, we believe, on our end on what the expectation is and what the requirement is. What the full barrier is, I haven't, we haven't got our full arms around, of whether it's just doesn't want to do it or is unable to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Henderson, anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Abstain.
And one abstention. Does the clerk have the division at the house?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is a joint powers agreement with Dakota County for the absentee ballot service. Presenting this evening is our deputy city clerk, Mrs. Erica Henderson. Mrs. Henderson?
So as the mayor just pointed out, this is for the Dakota County JPA for their absentee ballot services. The history of that JPA, Dakota County is the third-largest metro county here, and it's also the only county that does not provide the centralized absentee ballot services. The JPA was modeled after other metro counties. And also, there was a work group that was comprised of various city managers, clerks, and various school district representatives to provide feedback for the duties and costs of this JPA. The changes to the mail services would be that Dakota County will assume all voting by mail services. This includes the data entry of the applications. They will prepare the materials and the ballots to be mailed out to the voters. They will oversee the absentee ballot board, which will accept and reject ballots. If a ballot was rejected, they would also mail out a new ballot to that person, to that voter. They will also tabulate and prepare the reports for the AB ballots. Dakota County will also recruit and train all the absentee ballot board staff, and they will also provide a courier to collect envelopes from City Hall, which is very nice, because new legislation now will allow for absentee ballots to be dropped off at City Hall until 8:00 on Election Day. Early voting. There will be no... The JPA will have no effect on this in-person direct balloting, and it will... New legislation has changed it from six days to 18 days now. JPA benefits. One of the huge benefits is that it will ease the growing responsibility on the city clerks due to the increasing request for absentee ballots and all the changes in legislation. Also, Dakota County has the equipment and staff to handle the increasingly large volume of AB ballots, and will also streamline election night reporting, because all the absentee ballots will already be at Dakota County. There, I want to stress that there will be no change to in-person voting experience at City Hall. So the absentee ballot voting will still start 46 days prior to the election, and people still can walk in and pick up their ballot if they want. So that, there's nothing changing for that at all. It will also implement a standard of service that other metro counties do provide, and it will enhance the voter experience to have consistent and uniform handling for the absentee voting services across all the jurisdictions within Dakota County. For costs, Dakota County will pay 55% of the base cost and absentee cost. The cities will pay the 45% of the base cost and absentee cost. And these costs are based on the number of registered voters within the municipality. So Burnsville's estimate is about 3,600...
Thousand.
Or a thousand, excuse me, 36,000. And that does include the reduction for the new legislation from the voter funds allocation there of the 11,000. If there happens to be a special election, so on the odd-year elections, Dakota County will pay 75% of the base cost. Cities will pay 25% of these base costs, but the cities will pick up all the costs for the absentee ballot services. So we are looking for council direction that staff does recommend approval of the JPA with Dakota County, and it is effective starting for the 2024-2025 election cycle. I can stand for any questions.
Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. Can you go back one slide quick?
This one?
Yes.
The special cost? For the special election?
So like if the school district has a special election or referendum, are we still covering 100%?
School district.
Or is the schools...
The school district would pick up that tab for 100%.
If it's there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Henderson? If not, a motion is in order to adopt the resolution before us for the joint powers agreement.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.